Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning and welcome to our Thursday morning meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, July 18th. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. To my left Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning. To his left, Brandy Spangler, taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. And to her left Greg McNally, Director of Community Planning and Development. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning, Andy.
Good morning. And we have Keegan Shea with us from the County Attorney's Office and Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. There are sign-in sheets in the front as well as agendas. And we will start today with our consent action items, which I'll turn it over to Mr. Baltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'll read this into the record for you. It's item two A on the agenda. It's vendor claims report for the week ending July 19th, 2024. Staff recommends approval and Marnie Bentley is with us as usual. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions Commissioners?
None.
Okay, well, all right. Any public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent action items as presented by Roger Baltz.
Second.
Moved in second and approved consent action item two A as presented. Further discussion. Thank you, Marnie. Really appreciate your work. I hesitated there because I like to give Marnie a hard time. So, good morning and thanks for all of it. All right, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a grant award amendment to Lewis and Clark Public Health and the Montana Public Health Institute. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow. I'm the Community Health Promotion Division Administrator at Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a grant award amendment from the Montana Public Health Institute for their regional state opioid education and naloxone distribution program. We sometimes refer to that as O E N D P because of how long that is. And in the amount of $36,787. The grant period for this amendment will be from once signed and sunset with the original grant on September 30th, 2024. This amendment covers a few programmatic additions to the work, which includes helping distribute naloxone to our 12 county region, increasing the number of individuals trained to administer naloxone, working with the institute and state to help their evaluation of the project, and a final report. Naloxone is a life-saving measure that can help someone from overdosing on opioids. We've had 1,963 boxes of Narcan distributed between July 2023 to June 2024 out of Lewis and Clark Public Health. And these numbers do reflect the regional distribution, as I mentioned. We, in the beginning of the grant, really focused locally on distribution and in the last few months, we've been focusing more on that 12 county region that this grant covers. Thank you for your time and staff recommends approval and I'm here for questions.
Thank you very much. About questions Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair, for the public's benefit, we talked just a little bit about the distribution of the na- I have a hard time saying nal- naloxone.
Yeah, thank you. So this grant really is focusing on that opioid overdose prevention. So naloxone is that life-saving measure that can help if someone starts to overdose a law enforcement, a friend, a family member. You do not have to be a professional by any means to be able to administer it to someone who is overdosing. And you can't overdose from the treatment, which is really a beautiful thing. Sometimes it does take one or two doses. So the goal of this distribution is that we really try to put it in the 12 county region in as many hands as we can. Do you have someone at home that you're worried about? Well then, take a few boxes. Are you EMS? Well then, take a few, like, take more than a few boxes. At the city-county building, really places that people go that you're around the public or you're around a person or a situation that you think you might end up in this situation, we really want to distribute. So right now, originally they would go to a state website and be able to order online. That's still where you orders through the Montana Public Health Institute, Together We Can website. And now it comes back to Lewis and Clark Public Health if you're in our region. And Ally Mullin, who is our coordinator, she will send it out. We also have regional meetings to talk with our local partners in those 12 county regions, saying, where else should it go? Who should we talk to? Do we need to do trainings? So the goal is as many hands as we can and as meaningful as we can to distribute that, if that answers the question.
If I might follow up?
Yeah.
Just for instance, here in the city-county building, where would we go get it if we noticed somebody having some problems?
Yeah, at this point, so at this point, we don't have it in the city-county building. I was trying to remember where Criminal Justice was, but they're in a different building. We don't. So I think that could be an opportunity where we can have it on each floor and maybe there we can work with you to figure out where the right places would be. I think that's something we can work with you on.
We have it over at the 406 building at the, at the Law and Justice.
Yes, yes. Yes, they have plenty. And they also have a vending machine, which, so then anyone can go up to the vending machine. It's free and you can safely, securely, confidentially get some too.
Okay, thank you.
Some are even recommending to have one on you. I have one in my desk drawer, just in case. So there are those opportunities as well for folks to have one in their glove compartment or something like that if they'd like to.
Exactly.
Yep, you never know.
Yeah, just safety. I mean, at the health department, we make sure that upstairs where you're seeing clients, that it's just easy and it's on hand for everybody upstairs because you just never know. And when you need it, you need it.
Right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing no public come forward. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant award amendment to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Public Health Institute as explained by Ms. Sandow.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the grant award amendment as presented. Further discussion. Thank you, Sarah, for the explanation and your work on this. All right. With all that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. The Bridge Creek Estates Water and Sewer District and Mr. Fitzpatrick is not in the room yet. He's probably on his way up. So with your permission Commissioners, if we could set that item aside and go to item number five on the agenda, you're all all right with that?
New bid.
All right, so item number five. Oh, there he is. There's Mr. Fitzpatrick there. We were gonna, if you, do you need more time? We can go, we can put you down the, all right. We just introduced your item, which is board appointments for the Bridge Creek Estates Water and Sewer District. Good morning, sir.
Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections. A little surprised that you guys went through that first item so quickly. Apologize. So I bring before you today two appointments for the Bridge Creek Estates Water Sewer District. At the election this year, there were three seats open. No one applied. So we have two people stepping up and looking to join the board, Darrell Van Ort and Ryan Burke. Both live within the district and both are registered voters within the district. Therefore, Lewis and Clark County Elections recommends appointing both individuals to a four-year term on the Bridge Creek Estates Water Sewer District.
Thank you very much. Questions Commissioners? Just for explanation purposes, Connor, I always try to help people understand why we're doing things. So the reason that the Elections Office is recommending or presenting these appointments versus maybe our city-county or county administration presenting appointments to our boards and committees, these are elected positions. And so just maybe just explain the, just very quickly, the difference and why we're doing it this way.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, absolutely. For some reason or another, I have my theories. But Water Sewer District elections are done by the Elections Department. This goes alongside like hospital district elections, park district elections, fire district elections. They're all lumped into the broad category of special districts. Some counties even have library districts that are run through their Elections Office, but Lewis and Clark County does not have one of those. So there are other districts within Title VII has all of your special districts within it. There are other special district types, such as a cemetery district or a, I think a business improvement district might be one of them that we also don't necessarily deal with too often. But those are all done through the County Commissioners or City Commissioners. They're almost more like a appointed board, more than an elected board. Now, I know that's a little weird language-wise because we are appointing these folks, but typically this would be an elected board. It's just when nobody runs with the interest for holding those seats, then we get to a point. It's kind of a multi-stage process there. Whereas the other boards, to my understanding, are more, they're conducted more like a job interview, essentially. And those are ones that are, I believe Roger Baltz typically brings those to you folks. So yeah, now as for why a Water Sewer District is run through an Elections Office, my theory is that it has something to do with the American West and its history with water.
I don't know that we need to get that far.
It's a Water Sewer District and it goes through Elections Office.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, how about public comment on this board appointment recommendation? Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion please Commissioners to appoint Mr. Darrell Van Ort and Ryan Burke to the Bridge Creek Estates Water and Sewer District?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board appointments for the Bridge Creek Estates Water Sewer District as presented by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the appointment as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioners. Apologize for being a touch late there.
No, you're fine. That's all right. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-73, intent to increase the solid waste disposal fee as recommended by the Augusta Solid Waste District. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Ms. Dee Edwards, Senior Finance Coordinator, Lewis and Clark County Finance. And before you this morning is a resolution of intent to increase the annual Augusta Solid Waste Assessment Rate from $130 per equivalent unit to $145 per equivalent unit. The Augusta Solid Waste District Board met on April 12th, 2024 and voted unanimously to increase the Augusta Solid Waste Assessment in order to operate the Augusta Container Site, to purchase equipment, to service debt, and to maintain adequate cash reserves. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution 2024-73 as recommended by the Augusta Solid Waste District Board and open the public comment period. A public hearing for the assessment increase is scheduled for the August 6th public meeting.
Thank you very much. Questions Commissioners? All right, as you said, and I think it's right in the title here, this has been discussed and recommended by and voted on by the Augusta Solid Waste District Board and recommended to move forward with this increase. Just restating that for the record. Other questions? Anything? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Public comment. Hearing none. Is there a motion Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-73, the intent to increase the solid waste disposal fee as recommended by the Augusta Solid Waste District and presented by Ms. Edwards.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion Commissioners? Oh, go ahead Commissioner.
Just, you know, another response to the inflation we're seeing all over. And I think it's important that these districts be kept financially whole.
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to say thanks to Ms. Dee and to the District Board and the work they're doing, Public Works as well, city partners that all work together to help administer this district and recommendations they have and then those citizens up there that volunteer and bring this back to us about how they can make sure they're fiscally sound and running the programs as intended. So thanks to all of them. All right. With that Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is request for a conditional use permit for LifePoint Church, Phase Two, Zone 2024-008. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. County Commissioners, my name is Rachel Ward with the Community Development and Planning Department. Before you today is a request for a conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing church in Special District Number 43, East Helena Valley. The applicant is LifePoint Baptist Church and the applicant's representative is Jeff Downhour with Mosaic Architecture. I believe Jeff is here today. The subject property is located at 2526 Lake Helena Drive at the intersection of Remington Road and Lake Helena Drive. The property is 4.974 acres in size, per the plat of Arti Acres Number One. And it's had a church on the property for over 30 years. The property is surrounded by residential uses on all sides, including the East Gate Village Developments to the east and to the south, as well as the East Gate Elementary School to the southeast. As I mentioned, the property is in Special Zoning District Number 43, which lists churches and other places of worship as a conditional use. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit to develop a 4,330 square foot addition to the main church building for their K through sixth grade youth program. The addition will have four classrooms, a gathering space, office, coffee bar, seating area. And they're also proposing to pave the approach and a portion of the parking lot to incorporate 17 parking spaces. They plan to develop a new well wastewater treatment system, both of which will be designed to meet DEQ standards for a transient non-community public system. This is the second phase of the church's expansion and you probably remember the first phase of the expansion that went through this process back in January. That was for a 668 square foot addition to the church sanctuary. And as you can see, they're moving along with that project. It is almost finished. This is a schematic that was provided and this just shows from Lake Helena Drive where the new building area will be, where the paved parking is proposed. And you can see that where the, a portion of that gravel parking lot is that will be replaced with either new building footprint or expanded landscape area. We have some nice architectural renderings that were provided by Mosaic Architecture. Again, this is the view from Lake Helena Drive and looking towards the building facing the south. So as part of the process, our department provides a summary of the application and a site plan to various public agencies. These agencies were noted in the staff report. We received three agency comments. One was from the Public Works Department, one from the Noxious Weed Department and the Water Quality Protection District. The Public Works Department requested that a stop sign be installed at the approach. An approach permit be submitted for review and approval. An excavation permit and traffic control plan be submitted for the parking lot paving if large equipment's going to be within the right of way. And lastly, an encroachment agreement should be submitted for any signs that are in the right of way. Noxious Weed District noted that Noxious Weed Management Plan is not required, but that it could be beneficial in managing noxious and nuisance weeds pre and post construction. And then lastly, the Water Quality Protection District provided a two-page comment, but in summary, they recommend that new wells be drilled to a depth in excess of any seasonally low groundwater levels. And ideally, the maximum depth possible, given that they have seen a 30-foot lowering in that nearest well since 2015. Public notice of the public hearing for this project follows the requirements of Special Zoning District 43. A notice was mailed to adjacent landowners on May 30th, 2024. Was published in the Helena Independent Record on June 22nd and June 29th. While not required in the zoning regulations, we did post a sign onsite, as you can see here, on June 24th. To date, there have been no public comments regarding this proposal. So as you know, conditional use permits are granted based on review criteria outlined in the procedures for conditional use permit section H of Special Zoning District Number 43. These criteria include site suitability, appropriateness of design, availability of public services and facilities, and immediate neighborhood impact. The review also includes an analysis of conformance with the growth policy. I'll briefly go over how this proposal relates to the criteria. I'll pause between each section and if we want to discuss that further, we can do so.
Perfect.
Lastly, I'll note that there were 11 draft conditions of approval based on the findings of fact in the staff report. So going into the first review criteria, site suitability. With regard to adequate usable space, the subject property is 4.974 acres in size. It's currently developed with a primary church building, an auxiliary church building, a shed, fenced playground, and parking lot. The addition would extend the primary building to the east, approximately 40 feet from Lake Helena Drive, 60 feet from the south property line. All of this is well over the required 10-foot setback required for principal structures. Existing and proposed development would cover approximately 5% of the lot, which is again well under the 40% maximum lot coverage requirement of the zoning regulations. Access to the property exists via Lake Helena Drive, which is a paved two-lane county collector road within a 63-foot road utility easement. The property also has an existing gravel approach, which will be paved in this phase. With regard to environmental constraints, the property has no known wetlands, floodplain, high groundwater, surface water, or critical wildlife habitat, but is within the boundaries of the regulations governing soil displacement and disposal in the East Helena Superfund area. And they will be required to obtain a permit for soil displacement given the cubic foot of disturbance. And that covers the first criteria regarding site suitability. If you have any questions?
Any questions Commissioners or comments around site suitability? So just in conclusion there, the site suitability is pretty adequate in terms of setbacks, size of the lot, remainder, all of those things that we check to make sure that the site is suitable, and adequate access. Already has a good access off of Lake Helena Drive. There are already mitigation mechanisms for the approach permit, signage, and all of those things that'll be tied to the conditions of approval. And then the absence of adverse environmental constraints. And you went through those. And the only one that really stands out is that EPA Superfund site, which there's a permitting process to go through when you do certain level of soil disturbance and they're fully aware of that and it's part of the recommended conditions as well. So site suitability, from my perspective Commissioners, is covered. Appreciate that. We'll move on to appropriateness of design.
Okay. Moving on to appropriateness of design. The site plan shows with regard to parking, a new paved parking area within the existing gravel parking lot. This will accommodate 17 new parking spaces. And combined with the existing gravel area will accommodate 87 total spaces. The zoning regulations require one space per five seats or 40 square feet of gross floor area used for assembly area, which means that the zoning regulations require 72 spaces. So more spaces are being provided than minimum required in the zoning. The property is, with regard to traffic circulation, accessed from Lake Helena Drive. Again, a two-lane county road, which will be improved with a new paved approach. The parking lot is configured in such a way to accommodate adequate onsite traffic circulation. Public Works has also requested that a stop sign be installed in compliance with the Public Works Manual at the approach with Lake Helena Drive. With regard to open space, as mentioned previously, the majority of the lot will remain undeveloped, consisting of range grasses and a new native grass seeded area also. With regard to fencing, the existing perimeter fence will remain. There's no new fencing that's proposed besides simply relocation of chain link fencing around the playground. And with regard to landscaping, they, the applicant provided a landscape plan that includes sod and landscaping beds around the building. And there's a decorative landscape island at the entrance of the property. The plan replaces a portion of the gravel parking lot, as I mentioned, between the building and the expansion with Lake Helena Drive, and that'll be seeded with new native grasses. As mentioned by the Noxious Weed Department, a Noxious Weed Management Plan is not required. With regard to signage, subject property currently contains a sign, a stone monument sign located at the entrance of the parking lot. There's also two wooden posts north of the church used to secure banner signs, advertising church events. No other signs are being proposed. And I will just mention, the Public Works Department indicated that they would like to see an encroachment permit for any signs within the right of way. We confirmed with the applicant and also an onsite visit that that sign is not within the right of way. And so that is not a condition of approval, as you can, as you see. And then finally, with regard to lighting, lighting on the property consists of three pole lights and some existing wall lights on the church building. The applicant's gonna install new soffit lights and wall lights by the exterior doors, all of which, the cut sheets that were provided indicate compliance with our zoning regulations. That covers appropriateness of design.
Any questions about appropriateness of design Commissioners? Looks, looks like we've covered all the bases and the the conditions that are tied to these are, as we'll see, are will mitigate any of the issues that we might have. We've talked already about the traffic, parking, open space, not a big deal, and then the signage and how that would work if there is stop sign and appropriate permitting for the approach and all of that. So lighting plan already complies with the zoning that is in place. So, good. All right, let's move on to availability of public services and facilities.
Moving on. With regard to the sewer, the proposed church expansion will trigger the need for a new DEQ Certificate of Subdivision Approval. And the proposed plan includes upgrading the existing septic system with a new system with pressure-dose drain field designed to meet DEQ standards as a transient non-community public system. This along with water, they propose to include drilling a new well. It's going to be located just north of the building. I will note that the applicants did reach out to the East Gate Village Water and Sewer Association, but were denied connections, which is why they are proposing the new water and wastewater systems onsite. And then lastly, with regard to stormwater drainage, they are, the applicants provided a stormwater drainage plan, which includes two new stormwater ponds. One's along the north property line and another one's in that southeast corner of the property. The water, wastewater, stormwater drainage will all be reviewed and approved with the COSA rewrite that's listed as a condition of approval. With regard to fire protection, property is located within the East Gate Rural Fire District with station number one located approximately 0.5 miles away. We were provided email correspondence from the fire chief, which indicates that the district has capacity to serve the church and this expansion. And the application materials also indicate that the existing fire alarm system's going to be upgraded as well. The property is currently and will continue to be served by the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office, and we received no comments back from them. And then lastly, with regard to streets, the applicant included a traffic impact analysis, which was completed by Apple and Traffic Services, and they concluded that the church expansion is not gonna result in any roadway capacity problems on adjacent roads. As I mentioned before, Public Works will require an approach permit, an excavation permit, and a traffic control plan prior to any work being undertaken within the right-of-way of Lake Helena Drive.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Just point out that at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Payne brought up the issue of stormwater and the new hard surface and where that water goes, and all of that's been taken into account, and it was a good thing to point out and discuss. There will be detention of stormwater onsite and appropriately permitted and all of that. So that is great. Any other questions, commissioners? Fire protection is always a question mark, you know, and it looks like that's been adequately assessed by the local fire chief and approved, so. Good to know. All right, let's move on to the next.
And lastly, with regard to immediate neighborhood impact, in terms of traffic generation, the traffic impact analysis anticipates that ten additional vehicles per hour are gonna be added to the road network. Primarily, these are gonna be on Sunday morning during church hours. Because the church expansion isn't adding any sanctuary space, the analysis expects that there's gonna be minimal impacts to the existing traffic pattern. They're not substantially increasing the capacity for additional people during church services. There will be no change in noise or vibration anticipated with the expansion. There's music generated on Sunday, but again, this is gonna be within the building, and that's approximately two hundred feet from the closest residential structure. There's no change in dust, glare, heat, smoke, fumes, gas, or odors expected with this church expansion. And then with regard to hours of operation, hours will not change with this expansion. The church currently operates two church services, one at nine and ten-thirty. There are some special events that are held in the evenings. And church offices are open Tuesday through Friday from eight AM to four. And again, these appear to be reasonable for the residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Questions about neighborhood impact, Commissioner?
It appears that the impact to the neighborhood is aimed at the standard church operations, but isn't this expansion for classrooms, for, we're gonna have little kids running in and out, and school buses, or however they will get them there? Is that a part of this analysis?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, so this K-through-six youth program is more for during church, Sunday, Sunday school, not after-school or educational purposes. So this is just to make sure that the current...
I misunderstood. I was thinking we were going to have a new opportunity for private Christians in the school here, but that's not... Oh, you're so clever. Thank you for explaining.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thanks for the question. Clarification there. All right.
Okay. Lastly, we will move on to the growth policy. The project lies within the Transitional Growth Area of the Lewis and Clark County Growth Policy, which was updated in two thousand and sixteen. The Transitional Growth Area was established through consideration of lands identified by their proximity to Helena and East Helena, and the possibility of extending city services to accommodate future development at higher densities. The three primary constraints within the Transitional Growth Area include the road network, the capacity of rural fire districts, and wastewater treatment in areas of shallow groundwater. This proposal adheres to the intent of the growth policy because access to the property exists via Lake Helena Drive, which is a paved county collector road. Proposal is within reasonable proximity to a local fire station with adequate resources to address a fire emergency. And lastly, there's no high groundwater present onsite based on groundwater monitoring and well-logged data.
Okay, thank you. Any questions in this category, commissioners? The growth policy compliant? Looks like compliant with the growth policy is the conclusion. To sum it up, thank you very much. All right.
So I'll mention, as you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on July tenth, and they forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report with a modification to condition of approval number four, which now reads, "Prior to any development and/or soil disturbance, plans for the water supply wastewater treatment system and stormwater drainage facilities shall be reviewed and approved by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality."
Okay.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners? Okay. So the conditions of approval, well, let's talk about what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting first. So planning, this comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission first, as you mentioned. There are seven members there. This was discussed in length, and that commission supported this proposal seven to zero. All three commissioners sit on that commission, but then the recommendation was to approve it, that we would approve that, so we hear it again at this meeting and go through it again for the public good and public opportunity for comment, and then we make a final decision. So prior to doing that, commissioners, would you like to highlight or go through any of the conditions of approval at this time? Or we can have Rachel help us do that as well, if you'd like, just to make sure that we have everything on the record without any question.
One question that comes to mind, that amendment that was made during the Planning, zoning, zoning commission, right, meeting? Does that, does this have a chance of delaying the project? I know there are some delays being done on water-related things, but I think they're mainly through DNRC permits right now. Is that correct? Not rather than DEQ permits?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolfe, I believe, so the DEQ, the COSA rewrite is required, yeah, no matter what, just simply because of this expansion, it's required. In terms of the timeline, and if DEQ is reviewing COSAs right now, I believe they're, they are reviewing COSAs. I don't know if they're, yeah, because it's not tied to a water, right? Actually, I'm gonna defer to Greg if he has any other thoughts on this.
Commissioners, Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you, Ms. Ward. Greg McNally with the Community Development and Planning Department. I understand your question, concern about delay for the applicant in regards to any compliance with state regulations. However, regardless of their processes, they still are, we're gonna be required to get that updated. COSA, or Certificate of Subdivision Approval is what we call it, which is a DEQ's approval for this water and wastewater use. As far as their timelines, we haven't heard in a situation like this that there would be any delay, but they do have their own internal processes, and we are subject to, the applicant as well, subject to just dealing with how they process those applications. So while I can't speak to how long it will take, which is what you're really asking, we do anticipate that the applicant will make application to DEQ, and DEQ will be following their procedures for processing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't providing an impossible hurdle here because of the court action that was taken recently in Broadwater County.
And Mr. Chair, commissioners, that court action didn't affect DEQ. And, well, it doesn't pertain to DEQ's rules.
It's DNRC, isn't it?
That court action called out DNRC's rules.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't creating... And I would just point out, creating more problems than they're solving here. I don't think the language change changes anything. It just clarified that, wanted to make sure approval of DEQ came prior to them finishing their working on the project, so that's it. And I think that was already the intent of the language, so it just clarified it. So I don't think we've changed anything there in the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Any other questions? How about questions about any of the conditions of approval? As we went through the findings of fact and conclusions, these conditions address all of those findings and make sure that we're covered. I'm just looking to see if there's anything to point out. Maybe the last, the last condition, which is, or second-to-last condition was condition number ten, essentially moves things forward twelve months from the date of this approval. Go ahead, you can talk about it.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, condition number ten, "The conditional use permit shall terminate twelve months from the date of Board of County Commissioner approval if commencement of authorized activity has not begun unless the applicant, its successors, and assigns can demonstrate and maintain a continuous effort in good faith, preparing financing, securing state or federal permits, including DEQ, undertaking engineering and design, et cetera, and commencing the activity."
Right. So that's the timeframe? But just in lieu of the conversation we just had, if for some reason out of their control, they had issues with the timeline, they could come back to us and we could extend that, or however, there's a process for that, I will say.
Mr. Chair, correct.
Just wanted to make sure. So for example, if DEQ took longer than the twelve months to get their processing done, which hope that wouldn't happen, the applicant could come back and we could work with them to make sure they had more time to get it done. Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff right now?
Might I ask the applicant representative a question?
Mr. Downer?
I just, my concern is, you know, is there anything here that you don't feel like you can live with, it's creating a problem for you in moving ahead with this project?
Well, thank you, commissioners. My name is Jeff Downhour. I'm with Mosaic Architecture, representing the applicant. John wasn't able to make it today, but no, I think all the conditions were the ones that we had anticipated, knowing that there were still some things to do. We have been working with DEQ for quite a long time, but until this was approved today, we're not making the formal application. So we know there is gonna be some time there, but they do plan on hopefully starting this fall. So, yeah, we didn't have any issues. To answer the question brought up earlier, I think Rachel did a good job. It is a Sunday school facility. It's not a daycare or educational facility that'll be run during the week. I think their high school youth are there on Wednesday nights, like most churches, but otherwise it's strictly this lower-age kids for Sunday school. That was the correct answer.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you asked the question and invited him up. I was just gonna do that as well, and we did ask during the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant actually was here for that one, and basically made the same comments, that they were good with the findings and conditions and conclusions and process, and ready to move forward.
Yes, we are.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just want to have that on the record. Anything else, commissioners? How about public comment on this item? How about public comment? Public comment? Hearing no public comment. Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve a conditional use permit for LifePoint Church Phase Two Zone Twenty-Twenty-Four dash zero-zero-eight, as explained by Ms. Ward.
Second.
Move to second and approve the request for conditional use permit as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? I just want to thank Jeff and the applicant for their work on this, as well as Rachel. This represents a lot of work, so thank you very much in going through that and presenting it to us and getting the Planning and Zoning Commission together. It's a kind of a cumbersome process, but it is the public process that's laid out for us in state law, and we must follow it, so there you go. All right, commissioners, with that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much. On we go. Next item. Appreciate being here. Thank you, Mr. Downer. All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four dash seven-four, adopting the final operating budget and setting appropriation authority for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Frank Cornwell, CFO of the county. On Thursday, July eleventh, Board of County Commissioners met and voted to approve the preliminary budget, which includes one hundred and twenty-seven-point-six million in appropriations. The budget set forth the legal spending limits by fund type presented in the resolution's attachment aid. The resolution authorizes the chief administrative officer to make budget transfers and amendments as necessary throughout the fiscal year in accordance with state law, along with adjustments to additional revenues and reserves. Resolution also delegates department directors and elected officials the authority to make transfers and revisions at the category level for their operating expenses. This budget establishes the framework the county will operate for the next fiscal year, or for this fiscal year. The preliminary budget was adopted on June twenty-seventh, and the public hearing was held on July eleventh. There were no public comment, and staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you so much. Just really quickly, little bit of history, you mentioned it really fast, but we've had two preliminary hearings on this, and we've discussed them fully. And maybe just a little bit about the budget process starts for you guys now for next year, but for the rest of us to kind of get involved sometime in the fall, and then really engaging in the spring with the commission, and we meet with all of the departments and offices and really go through their budgets. We give them essentially guidelines from your position, telling them that, A, trying to not, we're trying to hold the line where we are, and these will be the likely and proposed increases to salaries, staff increases, as well as what we might see in terms of growth and those kinds of things. And so they have those assumptions prior to building their budgets, so they, by and large, all of the departments and offices come to the commission and present their budgets with a balanced budget in place already. A lot of great work has been done prior to even getting to us, and then we start that process. So, I don't know, just mentioning all the work you've been through, because this is a culmination of a lot that's happened over this last year.
Appreciate that, Commissioner, Chairman. And the, yeah, the one hundred and twenty-seven-point-six million dollars has been vetted through you for the past almost four months, four and a half months, and, and as you can, as you know, that these are all balanced budgets and effective strategies going forward for this fiscal year, and we are, I've already started thinking about the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-six, so I'm ready to move off of twenty-five and start building the next one.
Right. Thank you. Questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I might just comment, I had a couple of questions as we were reviewing this this week, and I just want to comment on how well everybody in our organization has worked together to try and keep costs down, to try to, and at the same time, provide the services that people, that people need and want. And we've, we've talked a little bit before about how this is gonna affect people's taxes, and I guess I'm pretty proud of the fact that on an average home, and they tell us that an average home in Lewis and Clark County has a raised value of somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, but on an average home, county operations are only gonna raise those taxes, which probably totals somewhere around fifty-five hundred dollars in total. We're only, county operations is only gonna raise those taxes about twenty-eight dollars for next year. And I'm excited... And I'm excited that we're, that everybody has worked so hard to provide the services at a reasonable cost, and trying to do it, looking for outside for resources from other government entities, and how we might grants and whatnot to supplement the tax income we have. And I just really feel like this is a great budget, and a lot of work's gone into it, and I'm really proud of what's being accomplished here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Anything, Commissioner Payne? Okay, good to go. Mr. Cornwell, thank you so much. Mr. Walts, thank you so much. And to your team, Mr. Cornwell, please thank them for us. How about public comment on this item? Public comment. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, commissioners, big moment. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash seventy-four, adopting the final operating budget and setting appropriation authority for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, as explained by Mr. Cornwell.
Second?
Move to second and approve the resolution as presented. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, commissioners. All right, we're at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on anything that's under jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none? Thank you to everyone. We will stand adjourned.